Welcome everyone to our first regular meeting of council, January 13th, 2025. And it's our first meeting of the year. So Happy New Year, everyone, and thanks to everyone for being here. Just a little bit of information here, the regular meeting of the City of Trail Council is held in the council committee room or in the council chambers. Also, the meeting webinars are reported and published to the city's YouTube at trail.ca/youtube. The first item on the agenda is called to order. The second item is adoption of the agendas. Is there someone to make that motion? Counselor Martin and Wilson, all those in favor? Thank you. And I would like a resolution to resolve into the committee of the whole place. Counselor Hansen, Counselor Butler, all those in favor? Thank you. Our, we have some delegations today, and our first one up is Jamie Jelens from Southport Inn in Innovates. And you're going to talk to us today about Stories to Solutions. Yeah, welcome Jamie, nice to see you.
Great, and so I'm just looking to see where the there go on that screen. So I just threw together a short presentation as a way to introduce the proposed project, but also give you a really quick update of the current project that feeds into this. And so, next slide please. So the opportunity that I'm coming to today is to be able to continue working regionally towards addressing rural homelessness, and that's applying for funding through the Social Science and Humanities Council of Canada, the Community College and Social Innovation Fund, which is the same funding organization as the current project is. And I will touch on that a little bit next. And so this proposed project is building off of all those relationships and the momentum and the learning that we have from our current project that's ending this year. And just as a reminder, the current project is titled Bridging Rural Homelessness and Wellbeing: A Sustainable and Collaborative Regional Response, where we have over 30 partners and the City of Trail was a partner with that. And so what I'm proposing today is a new three-year project using an innovative methodology so that we can continue addressing the needs of the region and to keep working together as a region. You can skip through the next. So just a quick reminder of the current project. So our current project, our direction of travel is to improve the wellbeing of those experiencing homelessness in the region. It's very hard, it's quite lofty, that's the complex arrows and drawings are in the corner. But the objectives that we did to reach that are to conduct research. So so far, we have done our research with community perceptions of homelessness. When that report, we just, our survey was out last summer, and we're almost, we're getting very close to having that published and ready to share. But the preliminary results are available. And we also, the year before, did, got insights from service providers and service users to understand current conditions. Through this project, we also did a, really got started on building and strengthening the relationships as a, as a region. And that to me is really one of the key strengths of the current project. And then building capacity through college resources, having students do summer outreach, having students do projects related to rural homelessness to help feed in the system and also better preparing them for the workforce to work regionally. And then to share lessons learned. Next slide. So just a little bit about the project so far. So our current project stats is we've had 30 project, our partner organizations with 70 contacts, two summits that we've hosted with 360 participants, two summers with student outreach, and the third will happen this summer. And that was funded specifically through the My Tax partnerships, which was made possible in part to the City of Trail, as well as the other two municipalities. Those two research projects to support decision-making, more than 20 students engaged, more than 70 people of lived and living experience engaged. And we've also started a pilot project for a lived experience circle on homelessness to build capacity to be able to hear perceptions and get feedback from folks with lived experience. So that's in the works. So just a reminder, it's something that I hear all the time is, you know, we, we don't want research, we want action. My argument here is that research is action in complexity. We need to learn what's happening so that we know what decisions to make. And then we have that feedback to see what's learning, what's not learning, or what's not working, sorry. So the need, this project is, the proposed project I'm going to now switch to, is homelessness continues to be an issue in our region. We know it just specifically Nelson, I just looked at the data for that, their pick count, their point in time count, and it's gone up 30%. And so you can assume that it's going up, and we can anecdotally see that here as well. Research from the current project highlights the urgency and scale of the issue, and that people want to share stories. We had almost 900 responses to the community perception survey. And more work needs to happen regionally to support solutions. And one of the ways that we'll find solutions that work in our region is by hearing all the diverse perspectives, by hearing from not only folks that are unhoused, but by hearing from business owners, from hearing from community, from hearing of all the different stories about experiences. Next slide, you're doing a great job following my narrative, thank you so much, Andy. So what is this project that we're proposing? So the goal is to use participatory narrative inquiry to gather and make sense of stories of experiences from all perspectives, collaboratively finding the solutions that are actionable to address rural homelessness in our region. And so the objectives to achieve our goal are to gather and work with these stories of lived experiences to create a space that will allow that authentic and ethical participation for all. Some of the key pieces on that is making sure that we have opportunities to engage with all those different perspectives that we talked about in a safe manner that could help address stigma as well. To keep strengthening relationships and learning from each other as a region, and to continue to build capacity through college resources. So pairing as many student projects, whether it's a paid internship, and/or I'm working really hard at pairing as much curriculum-based projects to this topic as well. And then to continually share lessons learned both within the region and, and beyond. So why stories? This is just a quick summary of why stories work. Think about it yourself with stories. Yeah, they are powerful tools for experiencing experiences, but also the values attached to it. They help people understand complex topics and situations. Homelessness is one of the most complex topics you could probably think of at the moment. It helps us see the patterns that are happening so that we can help inform the decision-making, including around the decisions around this table. It also gives empowerment by having those diverse perspectives, the opportunity to share, again, from all the different perspectives that I've already mentioned. Connection, so that empathy in all the different directions you can possibly imagine around the issue, and also resilience, because it provides the ideas we need to help navigate the complex issues specifically and what's working for us. So what is PNI, this proposal? So just kind of the quick summary of it is we collect stories. But what makes it different is when you collect stories, the storyteller also tells you what that means. Was it a positive story? Was it a negative story? Did it involve business? Did it involve, like, we get to learn a lot more about the story. So it's not just us as a researcher putting bias on it and deciding what the story means. The storyteller does that. And then we're able to map out all the different stories around homelessness. And then we could go and look at all the examples, or we could say, okay, let's look at all the stories here that had a positive experience in Trail. What are some patterns that we're seeing? What are some negative ones that we're seeing? What are the things that involve businesses? Like, you can look at all the stories from many different angles to see the patterns, and you do it together with the diverse groups. So you can, again, bring value and understanding to the stories. And so this, what this allows us to do is you collect the stories, you make sense of it, then you can test things, and iteratively then collect some more stories about interventions that you've been doing to address things that come up. So it's working together in multi-different steps. But the key thing for me as kind of the next piece is that it allows you to more easily see where there's opportunities to act, where there's energy and appetite and resources. You could dream up all these big projects, but if there's no resources or energy, it's hard to action them. But this process can help us find those easier solutions to test. And it creates the conditions for community-supported, evidence-based decision-making because of the diverse folks at the table. So my, the ask for this project, I really do appreciate and thank you for partnering with the current project. What makes this next proposed project important too is that partnerships are key for success. It's all a very participatory project. And so the couple options, as I see it, for participation is these two that you see up on the board. So participation partner, basically what we're doing now in the current project, where you stay informed in all the actions and you participate as you can, and have you have energy and resources. A strategic partner, and I will be looking for at least one local government rep of some type to sit on our advisory circle, is to help guide the overall project plan. So helping decide and give feedback on like, what are the questions we're looking at? And help with some of the design pieces that we're really gonna speak to the needs of local government. So I've actually asked over 50 organizations to partner. All five local governments are getting the direct ask, so all three municipalities and the two regional districts. And knowing that participation can be flexible, and I'm specifically asking all five local governments to support us with a cash contribution of the $7,500 that will allow us to leverage additional resources through My Tax. My Tax will help us then fund internships, that student internships, that we can then put towards the project process, but also maybe interventions that show up through the process as well. So it'll be emergent based on what the needs are. It could potentially look like summer outreach again, if that is an identified need, but it's more open to respond to the needs. And so the next steps is I'm hoping by the end of the month to have a confirmation of partnership, and then by the 14th of February to work through all the technical pieces to support us to officialize the partnership. And if they're funded, we will start in September, which is perfect timing when the current project kind of passes. Thank you for my quick summary.
Thank you, Jamie. I don't know if counsel has any questions for Jamie. Counselor Hansen.
Thank you so much for the great presentation, and thanks for the work that you've done on the current project. At the end of this, shall the city, just to move forward to support this, what would the city be getting as a result? Would we be getting like a list of actionable things that local government could do, recommendations? You know, what is the, what is the takeaway for us at the end of this?
The takeaway, it's a process project, so I can't tell you 100% what's gonna happen. But what I feel very confident in saying is that you will have many more opportunities to engage with all the local governments, with all the different stakeholders around this topic. And through all these stories, you'll have information to help support your decision-making that is going to increase the chances of success with the different choices you have to make. And as we know, it's, you know, homelessness is a bigger, bigger issue in all of our communities, and especially in Trail. So it's being able to really understand from all the perspectives what's going on, and then how we can find solutions. The process will help us find those solutions. So I can't say for certain you're gonna have a list, but I can feel very confident that through the process and participating in it, you'll know what those actions are because you're part of it.
Just follow-up question. Now, in regards to the municipalities, are you referencing Fortvale, Montrose, Warfield, Roseland? Because the City of Trail isn't the only, we might be the congregating spot for a lot of the homelessness. But it's, we have seven, or five municipalities, two regional districts within our jurisdiction, not including, you know, outstanding. So are you reaching out to beyond just the City of Trail?
That's a really great question. For now, with the capacity and scope of, you know, me trying to coordinate 53 folks, I'm sticking with the three municipalities for now and the two regional districts. Really, I'm gonna be working much harder with the regional districts this time to try to get more involvement from them, because that'll feed out into those smaller surrounding municipalities outside of the core three. That said, this project, if funded, could be a skeleton project that we can, I would be happy and hard to kind of have some ideas on how I can get additional funds and additional resources to make it bigger. So we'll kind of learn and see how it grows. And I'm very open to extending as there is energy and resources to bring them in. So I'm very open to it, but at this stage for this project, I'm sticking to the five, three, and the two. Thank you.
Counselor Butler. Thank you, through the chair. A few years ago, the City of Trail partnered with the Community Action Initiative and Interior Health and did a, they did a project that was called, what was it called? It was a similar, it ended up with the videos, like photos.
Photo voices.
Thank you. Yes. And, and it seems kind of like similar, they're like sharing stories. And just wondering, number one, is the, is the end goal different? And number two, would you be able to like, obtain some of those stories for your research to kind of see the change since like 2019, I think it was made, to see the difference over the pandemic?
Fantastic question. I've seen that video through the lived experience circle and homelessness as well. This is for the current project, we'll put that kind of direction, just because it addresses that, is for our last summit that we're organizing right now for the 2025 homelessness response summit. We're looking at sharing voices, and some of the folks that participated in that are kind of trying to figure out how we could share it at the summit. So just, you know, that's on the work. As for how it's different, it's very different because through participatory narrative inquiry, you share the stories, but that's where I was, I was mentioning that they'd also say what that means to them. And then it becomes an accessible source of information where we can look at all the different stories and how the meaning is assigned to them. So it's used to find patterns. Okay. And one of the things I haven't yet mentioned is, while we're still, I can't tell you 100% what it's gonna look like, but one of the key things is that the stories that we collect will be usable and will have like a story archive that can even be used post-project. We can go back, even if it's five, 10 years from now, saying, let's go back and look at all the stories that talked about, you know, homelessness in the City of Trail, the repository with businesses, or whatever parameters we end up with. They'll still be accessible, is kind of the goal, is to have that, that piece. And so it is different. Okay, yeah, thanks.
Counselor Keshaw.
Thank you, Chair. I guess my question might be directed to staff, so I'm hearing where you're asking $7,500. Would that fall under a grant? Money's in that's the case, should Ms. James be encouraged to submit a grant application accordingly?
I think what we'll be doing through the chair is bringing back the letter attached to this delegation to correspondence requiring action at the next meeting. And we will decide then, we haven't been through the budget process yet, so we don't know what we have in funds for grants yet. So I'm gonna defer to Colin, our CAO, when he comes back. But this letter will be attached to our next agenda.
Because her timeline is.
It's tight.
It's tight.
So we'll have an answer for her after the, the meeting on the 27th.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Keshaw. Is there any other questions? Thank you, Jamie, that was great. We look forward to hearing back from you. And we, as stated, should have something to you by January 31st, as the deadline says.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
If any questions come up after, even after your next council meeting, just reach out. Happy disappoint, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to departmental verbal updates. And I have a number of staff in here today, which is really exciting. And we are going to start off with the Corporate Services and the General Manager of Corporate Services on to Tracy.
Thank you. Through the chair, so just a couple of things to mention. We do have a draft contract for the TRP with Roseland. Basically, we have agreed to the draft contract. We are just waiting for CAO McClure to come back to give us the checkmark that it's a go-ahead to sign. So that's almost wrapped up. We have, last week, posted for the General Manager of Municipal Services. So we're going to leave that posting open till fill. We're hoping, we have got a few that have come in since we first posted. So we're keeping our fingers crossed that we have a successful candidate this time. We have a few changes in staff happening. We have both of our, we have a new electrician that started because of promoting Josh Conchi to the manager of Grounds and Roads. So we hired one new electrician, so he's brand new. And then we also have our other electrician who went through rotator cuff surgery. So, but he is the kind of person that comes in and stands over the new guy and helps out as much as he possibly can. So we thank him for that. But what it did allow us to do is offer a special training opportunity to one of our RFA twos in the arena. He is a second-year electrical apprentice. So we have transferred him over to the electricians and giving him the opportunity to show us what he's got for the time that our other electrician is up like this. So it's, it's actually been a great, I think, a great step in showing staff that we are willing to promote people, even if it's for a short period of time, and give them a chance to, you know, see what else is out there for them within the local government. We have, and of course, with that, we also promoted one casual RFA one to an RFA two. So we will be posting, you'll see a couple of postings out in the paper for recreation workers. What else have I got for you? Sandy, do you have anything else that we need to mention? No, I think that's it. CAO McClure will be back to work for January the 20th. Any questions?
The chair, that's an RFA one and an RFA two.
Oh, recreation facilities attendant.
Thank you.
Yes, sorry, recreation facility attends one and two.
Thank you, Tracy. On to our museum archives and physical sentiment. Sarah Benson Lord. Welcome, Sarah.
Hi, everybody. My first time addressing you all this way. Yeah, I'm just gonna give you a rundown of collections, statistic from last year. 256 museum accessions, so those are artifacts. 361 archival records, 3,006 photographs, and 543 sports-related records and artifacts. So that was a total of 4,166 accessions with the 2024 indicator, which is how we catalog our, our collection. So of that number, 612 were unique donations last year, and the rest was just a math and backlog that we will forever be tackling. It's good, it's job retention, isn't it? Between Addison and myself, we responded to 204 research inquiries from all over the world. And we hosted 40 in-person research sessions in our space. So that's with access to the microphone, Trail Times, and then our paper collection. The Visitor Center welcomed 4,580 people through the door. That is 1,610 over last year. I do really want to be clear that we track per destination DC requirements. That's even if they're coming to you at the washroom. So even if that's all they're doing, we still track it because it is a facility amenity, and it's, and it's free. So that's a tremendous, that's a tremendous increase for us. So between our event and established programming that we do all the time, we led 2,623 people through programming, and that's an increase of 800 people from last year. So people are coming out more. I think we're, we're shedding those effects of COVID because it really did impact our building. Our regular programming includes visits to Columbiaview Lodge, Poplar Ridge, Mountainside, and Fruitvale. We run lectures for other seniors groups at Southport College and at the Legion. And we also host our famous Hot Stove League for Seniors Men once a month now, which is growing and growing and very popular. And we submitted 46 articles to the Trail Times to support the Trailblazers series. So that's a huge one for us. It's, it's time-consuming, but the feedback we get is tremendous. I've had people tell us it's the only reason they're buying the paper, is for that feature. So we're pretty proud of that, and we want to hang on to that. So key projects from the end of last year, I revised and reviewed all of our operating policies as they pertain to the Trail Historical Society, as there are collections that we, we, we manage and interpret and we grow. We strategize on how to grow those. It included the creation of a new digital policy, which is kind of foreign to archivists who are used to paper and photographs and negatives and things like that. So much content is born in digital now that we have to factor in technological considerations like normalizing all file types and health checks. There are actually programs to run health checks through your digital files that Dwayne will know as check funds, I think they're called, on how to make sure that your files aren't corrupting so that we have access to them for years to come. So that's a big mind expansion for us that is kind of new to the archival world. We completed the digitization of our newspaper collection, so that was Trail Times from 1895 to 2022. Our partners at UBC Okanagan, the couple BC Regional Digitized History, that's where all of our photograph collections available online. They're migrating to a new platform, so the newspapers will be accessible and searchable, hopefully in early March. And we're fortunate through the Historical Society's nonprofit status, they own that collection. We obviously manage the project, but we covered about 40% of that cost in grant funding. So we can thank Tech Trail Operations, Portis BC, the Leroy Foundation, Cooley Savings Community Foundation, and the Historical Society contributed $10,000 with their own efforts for that. We worked with Tech and Smoke Eaters on the 75th anniversary of the arena. So hopefully someone gave her there for that event, it was really well attended. You'll see some archival imagery on the garbage receptacles, that was from, from our collections. Our 2025 calendar, there's a few left, if you haven't got it yet, come down and grab it. We'll probably discount, discount some of them, there's just a few left. We're continuing to work really closely with the Columbo Lodge. We kind of revived our relationship this year. We look after their collections, but as a result, Mr. Riley's 100th Gala, which watched a huge oral history program. So this presentation kind of spoke to me what she was talking about, and talking about meaning is really important. I think this is gonna be a really great project. Yeah, we revived their culture committee, so I sit on that committee ex officio to help guide them on what to do with their collections and make use of it. I'm just collecting and storing it, but let's, let's use it. And we, we'd obviously try to respond to as many programming requests as we can, given our little team of two for the spring. We're prepping for the acknowledgement of both Heritage Week and Family Day, which are both in February. The curation and design of our next exhibit, which is called Kamiko Folk Art. There was a lot of stuff made at Kamiko, not for Kamiko. I'm sure some of you have things in your basement, if you've been around here a while. We're hoping to draw that out of the community. Our 2025 tourism guide, the Arts Council Live will begin grant-seeking for Trails 125th, which is next year. I can't remember saying that's next year, but that's 2026. So we're looking at ways to create a cool moment for that. There are lots of anniversary grants out there at the provincial and federal government level. Finalizing budget, especially our capital, and that will include the addition of a new wall-mounted exhibit case in our history gallery to accommodate our growing early industry collection. A lot of Kamiko texts, early, early artifacts were given to the Roseland Museum in 1967. We didn't have the museum yet, so a lot of that stuff is up there, but things are really starting to trickle in. So we've got enough now that we can warrant a case just around the first corner. We are working on de-accessioning process. So I've talked about accessioning guidance, where we collect, we also have to cull. And it's a, it's a, it's an ethical process more than anything else. So we are working on that, we see that as a three-phase project. We're gonna look at a big pieces. There's only so many pianos and organs a museum can have that you're never gonna see. And hope to save some Historical Society some money in storage fees. We were gonna look to explore some self-guided heritage programming ideas, including digital tour, sort of in anticipation for some of the major events coming up next year. And some revisions to our multimedia gallery equipment, it's really outdated. It lacks accessibility features like closed captioning, things like that. We want to make that a bit easier to, to absorb in this more accessible world we all are attracted to. So that's it.
Okay, does the council have any questions? I just have a comment, okay? So because, as you know, my grandson's hockey team was in last weekend, the weekend before. And I was sitting in the stands watching his game, and someone had gone to the museum in the morning. So of course I had my ears wide open because they were talking to the other parents about it. And said, if you guys haven't been there, you have to go. She said it's the best museum that she's ever seen. Yes, it was awesome. She said the layout of it was. She said the layout of it was um, amazing, just the flow of it. But what she, and I was really proud of this, what she said is the staff in the library museum were so helpful and had so much information. So you could see them talking amongst themselves, "Oh, we better do that after. You know, if we lose this game, we can go," you know. So no, it was great. And I wanted to tell you that. I wanted to tell you that earlier too, but just seeing you here today. So you guys are doing amazing work there.
Thank you. It's, it's good work. It's the feel-good work, and it's the way we can showcase our community and the people doing really good things.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, Kameko. It's your turn. So we have the airport manager here today to talk with you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Through the chair, I'll just provide brief updates on uh, happenings at the airport. I'll start with some stats. First of all, some passenger counts. Um, going back to twenty twenty-three, we had projected nineteen thousand inbound and outbound travelers. Uh, we reached a total of eighteen thousand four hundred and ninety-six. We were close to that number twenty twenty-three. Twenty twenty-four, we projected twenty thousand um, with the addition of the Saab aircraft uh, in late fall. Um, we, however, only hit sixteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine. Weather was the big issue. So January, February, most of November and all of December were really a downside for our lenders. So moving on to twenty twenty-five, um, with the continuance of the Saab A three forties, we're projecting roughly around twenty-three thousand travelers, weather permitting. Um, those numbers are projected based on the Saab had been flying in prior to uh, COVID. Back in two thousand nineteen, when they pulled the Saabs out of the system, that was kind of the number, that twenty-three, twenty-three-five was the number for that. As far as um, current projects ongoing, uh, the airport has applied for a air, airport capital assistance program uh, grant, which is for a front-end loader with a snowboard value of approximately five hundred thousand dollars. We should be receiving confirmation whether we did or did not get the grant by April, May timeframe for this year. Um, furthermore, we also are working, the airport's working with a consulting company called TO Seventy to apply for a DC Air Access Program Grant towards uh, a new master plan for the airport. Our last plan was created uh, back in two thousand eleven, when the airport was still owned under RDBK, or RDKV, sorry. Um, and that plan was effective until twenty thirty-one. However, currently, the way the scope is gone, as the city took it over, yes, we did build the terminal. Yes, we did the airport expansion and resurfacing. However, we're no longer in that kind of scope of where that plan is. Um, if approved, uh, we would be eligible for thirty-five thousand dollar funding. Um, the intake is usually November to December of the previous year, would have been last year. But uh, this year, they've uh, they, they're still delayed. They're saying right now, early New Year. So as soon as it comes out, TO Seventy is gonna put the application together for us to have it be one of the first of the minister's desk, what they're hoping for. Um, and moving forward, Silver City Days, whatever we like to talk about, um, we're looking to um, for Nathan, a flying barbecue event. With private aviation, Pacific Coastal might be involved as well in that. Um, right now, we're looking at, you know, who's gonna, gonna run that. The air cadets maybe get involved in that with Flying Club. Um, so we're in contact with them to discuss that. And that's all I have for now, Chair. Any questions?
Thank you. Uh, is there any questions from council? So I, I do have a quick question for you. Sorry, it'll be quick. So when you say you're beyond the scope of your master plan, can you just explain that a little bit? Are you um, growing faster than what the master plan thought?
Well, we're, we're looking at the master plan. I think we've diverted from it. We have actually not gone to the growth aspects of that master plan. Because the master plan itself should be a living document, and this had set stage timelines right till twenty thirty-one, and we're not on target with those timelines.
Okay.
And the numbers and, and, and those kinds of things. So.
Okay.
So this will really get us to look forward now. Most master plans nowadays are done in ten years. Because with the changes are so recurring, you know, things change so much faster nowadays that master plans don't generally push forward past ten years.
Yeah.
So this one's gonna allow us to have a look at a framework moving forward for the next ten years and be a fluid living document that as things change, that master plan can change.
Can change. Oh, good. Okay. Okay. Well, thank you. Thanks for being here today and everything that you do.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on to communications and event manager.
Hey, who's your chair? Hello, everyone. You know, but my role has a few different components to it. Communication and events day. I like to break communications down into the internal and external uh, to help me navigate my work plan. So I just wanted to start off um, with the external communication projects that I've got going on and the goals there. Goals right now are reach different audiences, um, inform, educate, and inspire people and, and through that, improve community engagement. That's through informing people and then also consult them, maybe collaborate with them or involve optionally. And then we report back to the community and you all make decisions. We ask you questions about that. So um, those are some of the goals of our, my external communication projects. Uh, we have, of course, the ongoing radio advertising. Some of the things that were, you know, featured most recently are free skating. We had tree cutting happening at Gyro, and we needed to get something up that was informative about the walkway being closed. Utility payment reminders, um, the TMC, seventieth anniversary, Santa parade, things like that, as well as our council meeting agendas, like where to go for the agenda and um, when the next date is. So those are rolling into the, the New Year as well and just staying on top of updating the most current stuff that we need on radio all the time. Uh, we also, at the end of last year, had a couple sponsored stories in Today in B.C. That was the Violin Lake um, story and the Bridge Emergency Preparedness Story. And those both had some really good uh, key performance indicators that we're meeting these goals that I mentioned before, like reaching different audiences. Our social media really has a more female following and um, the all the data from the uh, Today in B.C. stories are like drastically more men are, are looking at those stories in comparison. So say we've got sixty-seven percent women on Facebook and thirty-two percent men. We've got like seventy-two percent men and twenty-eight percent reading these Today in B.C. stories. So it's meeting that goal of reading, reaching some different audiences than say what our social media does or our website. And it's also hopefully informing people and educating them on these topics a little bit more so when they engage with us, it's more from the more informed place. Uh, and we have another story coming up soon, so stay tuned. I don't wanna do a spoiler on um, camera. Um, we also have, of course, the strategic priorities, release and video that you've all been working on uh, that's coming up to be communicated externally as well as OCP stuff. Uh, tourism guide like Sarah mentioned, we'll be working on a little bit of a revamp with that this year. Um, website updates. Um, I'm always kind of working away on there, really hoping to get the calendar of events for twenty twenty-five up on there. A lot of community members have been inquiring about um, when they can expect a full calendar of events on there. So we're working towards that. Um, our water quality report is uh, we've got a new one to get up there. Um, and we're also planning to maybe migrate to a new host and looking at some other modules to help the function of what we need from the website. So um, I'm also working on some general advertising for the website, just so more people are clicking there for information rather than making up um, answers from not knowing where else the information is. So I'm just trying to send lots of people to our website and advertising it as the main spot that holds information about the city trail. And also having to do some maintenance of like the trail aquatic and leisure centers, uh, hours and things like that on our Google listings, things like that. Uh, working on the twenty twenty-five budget, social media analysis and strategy, um, and we're looking to update our airport uh, your communications ERP based on the table talk that we had out there um, a few weeks back at the end of Wednesday, November, November, when we were there. It was a really great tabletop exercise, and I wanna have a few learnings to uh, implement to our, our concierge RP and then distribute that internally. We had awesome events in the fall, National Day of Truth and Reconciliation, Spooktacular, OCP Open House, Santa Parade. It was busy. It was um, really well attended. Our community just loves coming out to these community events, and you see how much they value it. So um, you know, looking to twenty twenty-five, we're gonna have the Family Day weekend, probably free swim, I'm guessing. Um, though I haven't confirmed that, but we'll have, you know, of course, Silver City Days is gonna, is a big thing for us right now. We're working towards getting the food vendor applications and parade entries and sponsorship letters all distributed this month. So also Canada Day Picnic at Gyro, that'll be super fun. And we're, we're working toward it. We're working toward it also. That's about all for now.
Oh.
Thank you.
You're busy. Wow, that's a lot going on now, Claire. Thank you so much. Um, council? Go ahead, Councilor Hanson.
Um, thank you so much, Claire. Nice to be here. Um, just wondering, you mentioned about some updates to the website. Um, for logistical um, navigation for mapping, is there any plans? Um, and of course, working with the rest of the city as well, for updating the mapping to something more um, up to date? Like they would have such in Roslin that you would be able to click on the property, get the zoning, get the GIS, get the um, uh, where the water lines are, sewer lines are on the website? We don't have that now. Okay.
Um, I understand from our engineering tech that we are going to be linking into the regional districts mapping plan.
Okay.
So that will give us some enhancements to ours, so.
Yeah, because it's just, it's when people are looking.
It's very cumbersome right now.
Right, and I, you know, I think people hate calling to bother someone. It's like, oh, I'll just look that up.
Yeah, so yes, there are some plans to enhance.
Perfect. Thank you. Hey.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Claire. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, information technology, Information Systems Coordinator, Dwayne Green.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
So as most of you know, we uh, provide help desk services and network support and service for administration to the Information Systems Department. Uh, we've had a, a fairly successful year in twenty twenty-four. We managed to keep the, a data center replacement, disaster recovery center replacement. Um, our GS network was replaced. Uh, we placed all the mobile phones. And we had a cemetery to them. Um, some projects coming up in twenty twenty-five included uh, the computer replacement, which we didn't get to this year. Um, work group printer replacements of big Xerox units in all the departments will be coming up in August. And we're looking at our website refresh with uh, layer this year. Um, and phones might be replaced this year. That's wild, depending on budget. And that's last year and this year. Any questions?
I think my questions that I have for you, it's about the um, span that we get. It's getting really, really professional, don't you think? And I'm always scared. You know, is this something that I should open or something uh, that I shouldn't? And you know what would be nice is to have some tips about, you know, what are you looking for or what to look for before you open this?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we can definitely get that out to you. We've done it in the past. Um, the uh, the world is getting less secure. It's more and more challenging. It's the uh, it is the biggest issue we face in the department. Due to vendor issues and lack of resources, we're, we're really just getting by. But in terms of that level of training, uh, we can do handouts and stuff, but training in a classroom is highly unlikely.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Council Benson, go ahead.
Through the chair. Um, just wondering if um, is there any plan? Um, many phone calls I get are um, about the trail hotspot. I'm sure you get more phone calls than I do about it. Just wondering if there's any plans specifically the arena and the airport? If there's any plans to boost that a bit?
Uh, so there hasn't been any plans. I, I, I think the airport is pretty good. Um, people might be able to speak to that. Um, the Memorial Arena is a big space. Um, and when we did that guest network project in first flight of guests wifi, uh, we did it off the side of the desk. There wasn't really a budget for it. So it's kind of grown over the years and it's gotten bigger. Um, but a lot of that equipment is, is out of date and doesn't sit in our placement cycle. Uh, it's just one of those projects that somebody wanted and therefore got done as opposed to being managed.
Right, okay.
Um, there is, I believe, wifi associated with the smoke piece. I'm not sure if that is public there or not. But that's another piece of Memorial Arena that is a problem in terms of competition with other services. Um, certainly if uh, parks were interested in doing it, typically the way IT projects happen is those supervisors would uh, either bring it to the IT steering committee or they would bring it to me directly, and we would incorporate it in a budgeting process.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Those are handsome. And I just wanted to say, I can't tell you how excited I am to see a website update and refresh. I, that's something that I get a lot of feedback, um, is that our website is definitely not quite as user-friendly, I think, as some other municipal websites, just finding things. You gotta click here to go over there, to go over here, to put this, to get property taxes or to get, right? So I think just an update and a refresh is a cool, great idea. And I love the calendar events on there, like in one-stop shopping for all the things going on. So thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Claire? Thank you so much for coming today.
You're welcome.
Yes, our finance department, we have a senior financial analyst, Lois Hunter here today.
Hi.
Welcome.
Uh, so, um, year end, so it's a big time in finance department. Um, so I'm starting to prep getting the financial statements ready. Uh, the auditors are already starting to ask questions, so, so trying to find things back to them. Um, we've got a big project happening at the same time in terms of we're changing our charter accounts. Um, our current set of charter accounts will, can have like a code, um, like it can be called repairs and maintenance, but within that, there'll be later charges, the vehicle charges, there'll be parts. So we've gone on training. It's like one great big flurry of bucket of everything that's um, being charged there. So um, I'm looking to, so I've designed the charter accounts where we can then classify what is the, what is the cost related to as in location. It could be City Hall facilities. It could be the RCMP or it could be um, City Works. And then we break it down to maybe parks, like we can bring it down to lower levels. But then we've got the element, element of it where we'll have specifically labor or parts and maintenance or vehicles. So when we have the new charter accounts in, in play, if we wanna know how much we spent on site advertising, we can easily run a report off. It'll be for the whole of the city, and we'll have a number very quickly. Or if we wanna know how much City Hall, just as a hall is costing us, it's very quick to run a report when you've got charter accounts where everything's going into one place to actually know how much is in there that say relates to training. It becomes a huge exercise, and sometimes the resources to do it is just like time versus value of it. It doesn't get done. So, um, so I'm working with Baben, who's our financial software. Um, unfortunately, scheduling time with them has been challenging, so the charter account is due to change over at the end of January, which is great because it's the beginning of our financial year. Twenty twenty-five will be in the new format. Wonderful. It just brings an added complication of each year end at the same time. So unfortunately, the start of our year end will be in the old charter accounts, and then it will flip, and then I need to do it in the new charter accounts. It's just a, an added element. Um, another project that's been going on that has finally gone live, actually, just last week, is we now have online credit card payments available. Um, so on our website now, we have uh, you can pay your property taxes, utility billing, property taxes. Hang on, let me start again. Property taxes, utility billing, business license and pet license you can pay on credit cards online. Um, we have discreetly kind of put that online with the view that when we send out our next bills, so our utility bills that go out this week, there's gonna be a flyer that so our utility bills that go out this week, there's gonna be a flyer that goes in with them that tells everybody that they can do that. Um, even though we discreetly kind of put it on our website, I just had a quick look before and we're already receiving payments for our business licenses. We've had a few utility bills, so people are on the website and they're finding it and using it. Um, it's through a service called Paymentis and they do, it is a service that provides and also there is a charge with that. And it is the same as if somebody comes into City Hall and pays on credit card. It is two point four percent. It is the same. The only difference is, is that if they do it online, um, they will pay the two point four percent and Paymentis will get that. And then we get the amount that they're owing. It's actually better for us because it takes the administration's ire and we just simply get what they owe. And it's upfront, they can see, um, it's pretty straightforward. Um, so I like it because it's, it's very simple. And also what I like about it as well is that if they put their account number in and say it's a number wrong, gives us their email address and it gives us their telephone number. It makes it easy for us to, to contact people. Um, so the twenty twenty five residential utility bills are currently being calculated and they are set to go in the mail, um, later this week. Um, that, that is, I roll it down and I don't print it on there. That is about three point two million. So, uh, the front counter is gonna get very, very busy next week of people coming in. The flyer that's going in with their utility bills tells them the payment options, which is, you know, they can come into City Hall, but now they can pay on credit card online, but we're trying to push people paying via their online banking. It doesn't cost the citizen anything. It doesn't cost us anything. And administration wise for us, it's simpler and it's less time consuming because six months ago, eight months ago, when people paid ready their online banking, the bank would send us a fax and then somebody would take that fax and type it in. So we've now changed that system where the bank collects it all electronically. We gotta file real little bit. It takes minutes, whereas it used to take hours. So we are trying to actively pursue people paying online through their banks. Previously, they could only pay online for their property taxes and utility billing. We've just got it to go live, although there are a few banks who are having difficulties right now for accounts to see the whole of business licenses. I know CIBC said that they are currently settled. The credit unions are definitely settled that we can pay online. Um, I'm chasing BMO and TD to find out why they're not working. So there is a few, uh, uh, what shall we say, transition challenges right now, but it is, it's, it's coming along. Um, so last week, first part of the year end, any utility bills that haven't been paid for twenty twenty four residential, they get a ten percent penalty and then that the balance of twenty twenty four gets transferred onto their property taxes. So there was a twenty thousand, um, dollars in penalties. And unpaid residential property, uh, unpaid residential utility bills that had not been paid was two hundred and twenty-three thousand, which has now been transferred onto property taxes. And that.
Two hundred and twenty-two.
Two hundred and twenty-two thousand. Yep. And that now is on their property tax account and they now start to pay daily interest on that. So as part of the utility bills being printed out, it will have their previously outstanding balance on that. Um, in terms of property taxes, um, I just printed off the report before, so we have delinquents. So delinquent in twenty twenty-three taxes that have not been paid is a hundred and fifty-one thousand. And that is sixty-six properties, so we will be, I think we'll just let the dust settle first with the utility villains and then we'll start chasing people because those people who do not pay will find themselves in the tax sale in September. And believe me, I do everything to avoid you to tax sale. It is an administration nightmare. Um, areas, so people who have not paid their twenty twenty-four, uh, taxes is in the volume of seven hundred thousand dollars. And then we've got the other side of things, people who are proactively paying their bills, who prepaid their twenty twenty-five. So we have a credit of four hundred and sixty-nine thousand. So we've kind of got a spectrum there of where people are at. Um, on utility side outstanding, including the twenty twenty-four monthly bills that have just been calculated. So the commercial customers who have just received their December bills, we're in the region of eighty-six thousand outstanding, of which fifteen thousand relates to December. So we, we will be doing some chasing on the, the utility side. And then people who are proactively paying their utility bills, um, is in a credit of a hundred and thirty thousand. So again, we've got people who are not paying and people who are proactively paying. Uh, so business licenses went out in the mail. People are proactively paying them, which is making the front counter busy in terms of people paying the business license. It's the new term, uh, it's so, so there's lots of student bus passes being sold right now. Um, and, um, tickets, parking tickets. So the visit, the front counter has been quite busy with the bus tickets. And, and yeah, it's gonna get busy next week once they get their utility bills. Uh, accounts payable, we're trying, trying to encourage all our suppliers to move over to EFT payments. Whereas previously we paid everybody by a check, which again, administration wise is, is a lot of work. Um, if we can get people to sign up, give us their bank account details, we can pay them directly. Well, we have, we have some people who are insistent that they're not gonna move over, but the kind of post, it did seem to shift to quite a few of those. And, uh, T-pools are currently in, in progress. Um, um, we, we don't over promise on that one. We do just say February twenty eighth in case there are any issues on that. Um, I think those are the main, main events of finance.
Okay, great. Councilor Martin has.
Thank you through the chair. Those, those delinquent numbers that you're talking about, is that, is that common? Like, it just seems to me, we've never heard this part of it before. It just seems like a lot. Is that, I mean?
The, it's, it's about sixty-six properties that are currently unpaid. You quickly find that when you get closer to tax sale, like we, we, we try and chase people on a, you know, like every three months, you know, on a quarterly basis, they'll obviously get their property tax, uh, tax notice and it'll show up on that. But as soon as we start sending letters that saying you are going to tax sale, this is the date, you'll find some of them quickly paid. And then you get down to generally about twenty, that becomes a struggle. And at that point, we then start involving mortgage companies. And then mortgage companies are generally, you know, pretty receptive. Some, I've had it where some of them have not. Like they wanna wash their hands and then you get down to generally like kind of five where you, these are your problem ones. Um, yeah.
Okay, great. Any other questions from Council? Okay, thanks for being here today. So next on the agenda, we have the emergency services update with Sergeant Masanewit.
Thanks for having me. I can include you probably in the most important one. Without her enough. Uh, I'll start with the resource update because I actually have some positive hot news. So. Yeah, we have ten members working full-time right now. That's out of, uh, eighteen total. And we have a new recruit starting at the end of January. Now, we have six people um, on what we call GRW or administrative duties. Uh, three of those are working forty hours per week. They just can't work uniform with like a gun in their vest or what's up due to, uh, injury, basically. But, uh, they're due, all due back probably, I'm gonna say end of January, February, uh, middle of February. Uh, then we have two other members who are not working full-time hours, but are due back within the next two months full-time. Uh, so things are looking very positive. We just have one person who needs, uh, medical treatment before they can return to work. That's gonna be a little longer, but, um, considering we have a full supervisory staff right now, it looks like we'll have, um, seventeen out of eighteen members, at least in the office working. It's like night and day, so it's been a very, very long time since we had this, but we're hopefully we stay this way for significant amount of time, but that's the next challenge. So it looks like that is, the HMP is really committed. It takes a long time, but it's starting to pay off, so. And, yeah, and we've dealt with like, uh, a few things that, like people retiring, uh, have come off our list. Uh, one recruit who could make his, uh, could complete his field training, so he's left. So there's been a few positive changes now for us. Uh, any questions about resources?
Okay.
Uh, I'll go over the fourth quarter first, uh, and then I'll go over the year. So, uh, of course, the most notable file was one homicide that occurred in, um, Montrose, unfortunately, Lindsay D'Anicella. That is being handled by our major crime section out of Kelowna, but we do provide some assistance and, and local support. Uh, throwing well, very good evidence. I think we see a file this year and hopefully the community can have some, uh, justice and also, uh, you know, resolve it and move on. Uh, it says two, but when I looked it up, it's actually, uh, an assistance on a homicide, so, uh, that has connections to this area, but didn't happen into this area, so it still counts under our stats, but it, there wasn't a second homicide. Um, most of the other stats are fairly, are fairly the same as the fourth quarter last year. There wasn't any really things that pop out on me. Um, yeah, overall, um, we did see, uh, persons or violent crimes. We did see a slight uptick, um, and then property crimes were slightly up, but then other crimes were down and, uh, total criminal remain approximately the same. So it's just a change in the mix. That's not uncommon. Now, in the files, the calls for service that quarters stayed relatively the same. Uh, any questions about the fourth quarter? Go ahead.
Uh, the chair, um, so what would be an example of other, other?
Criminal code?
Criminal code, yeah. Just cause it's gone from one eighteen down to seventy-nine subjects. What would that encompass?
So there's a number of them, like when you talk with persons and violent crimes, it's like crimes against people or violent crimes, properties like theft and breaking enters. Then all the other things, like there's a whole bunch of different things in there that don't quite, uh, match. I'm trying to think of something specific out of the criminal code, like, um, uh, there'd be something. Uh, I'd have to think of something, but it really just kind of encapsures, like, it's still crime, but it's not, doesn't quite fall into those other categories, yeah.
The miscellaneous.
Yeah, kind of like that.
Thank you.
Yeah, any other questions? Uh, so for the year, things actually went fairly well. We're, and you know, I do raise this council for their work on the shelter because I see it in my stats. Now, there's, looks like there's been a drop in three hundred, like three hundred calls. It may not seem significant, but that's basically one call, almost one call a day. Um, and what I noticed more is that like in the total year, uh, violence was down, property crime was down. We only had, oh, sorry, I should say in, in the fourth quarter, the most thing was theft of motor vehicles at two. We used to have over a hundred, sometimes two hundred theft of vehicles in a quarter, like, so we're at two now because, you know, maybe some people aren't calling them in, but I think that the community is realizing we live in a different world. They're locking the doors, they're securing their items and it's made a big difference. So I do think overall, we've seen a drop over the year because people are taking those measures. And, um, it's nice to see it going down. Now, it doesn't mean it doesn't fluctuate, but when I looked at other years too, and I think maybe it might be a bit of a trend overall, we were over six thousand calls and so it looks like it's slowly declining. And, you know, uh, I think in society, crime is slowly declining just with the baby boomers getting older, because they had a big population bubble, crime shot up. And then as they aged, they aged out of kind of committing crime and things went down. So we seem to be following that trend. But, and I think part of it is because of the industry from the place. Like, it doesn't happen passively always. But when you have a shelter that takes care of twenty-five people day and night, um, and as well as assigning us a street nurse, uh, who was at our detachment yesterday, uh, you know, offering to connect with somebody, uh, with drug treatment and mental health support. Um, and, uh, actually Paul had an incident at Credit Union. That person's been put in contact now because of a medical issue. So it's, I, I think overall, we are getting some better tools now. We will see a continued drop. At least we'll stay with the trend. Uh, because some cities are going up. Some cities are have violence that are out of control, like Merritt right now is very violent due to a drug, drug trafficking or drug, drug war. And there's a whole bunch of crazy things going on. So that being said, today, it was funny, we trail, we get everything. This morning I got, had a call from a lady from the thrift store. She's putting ten o'clock tomorrow, if you're interested. The fruitvale thrift store, they have a pair of fake Gucci shoes for thirty dollars. She's worried about, uh, a riot or people fighting over them. So she said, I'm gonna need to pick her up. The next call we got was an armed robbery at the Canadian Tire in Kalska. We assisted Kalska with that, because it looked like they, they were coming our way, but they ended up a long road getting stuck and getting arrested. But so it's a wide variety of things in trail. Like, we're very generous here, but we still have that very small townness. Um, so we may, we're out that way. We may drop by that thrift store, but I'm sure the ladies will sort it out for small feet. You got big feet, uh, you don't need to go.
Size for they? I don't know, but apparently mine.
So I'm hoping that, uh, we keep with the trend of getting more resources, because when we have more resources, we do get more officers out there working on the street, finding things. Um, and a lot of the proactive work is done by stopping vehicles or checking people or checking warehouses and stuff. So, um, it's going well. It's going better. Yeah.
Bottom. Okay, Councilor Hanson.
I'm just a couple of questions. Um, so one, in drug investigations, this year and last year, we're about thirty-two. Are those planned drug investigations or are those ran into someone, they had stuff on them, searched the vehicle and you then were able to do a drug investigation? Or these were things that you've been tracking people for a while and then have a plan? Just wondering if the number's at thirty-two, is that low? Should that be higher or is that just circumstantial?
It's very low.
Okay.
Um, and yes, they're down overall because of the possession laws. So typically in the past, we could, um, arrest people if they're in possession of drugs, no matter the amount. Now it's two point five grand, so it makes it incredibly difficult to arrest anyone. And there's a bunch of different rules. They did change them, so like if you're in the vehicle and a few other things that have made it easier. But the primary way now to seize drugs is by vehicle stops and someone being in excess of that or being impaired. Uh, those are, that's the most of how we do it. So we just have to adapt. Uh, the, we used to, if someone's selling drugs in my house, we used to be able to arrest people leaving the house. We thought, oh, drugs, because they're in possession of drugs. Now you can't do that because they're allowed to have it. So it's very challenging. I don't really understand the strategy behind the drug trafficking portion. Like, I understand the possession strategy. They're trying to see if this works and giving people drugs makes things better. But drug trafficking is very difficult to enforce. So we target vehicles, usually impaired. Uh, drugs and crime are very interlinked and a lot of the drug cases we get are a result of some other type of arrest or some other type of investigation, but with the understanding that this is the person we're looking at and going for. So rather than arresting them in this house and doing a search for it, forgetting their ID. And it seems like we're fairly successful at our level. We're municipal, like we get, um, our repeat offenders pretty, like people who are involved in the drug world pretty regularly. Uh, but there's just lots and they just kind of refill and recycle and we're dealing with, um, a number of issues with the same people all the time.
And then, um, just my, uh, next question. So with these changes that, um, happened with not being able to drink drugs, within so much distance of, um, doorways and whatnot and what sheltering place, have we got, have you been getting calls from people saying, hey, like they know that that's now the law change and it was quite public? Are we getting calls from people saying, hey, there's someone doing drugs in my doorway and they are actually able to be arrested in front of that doorway? Now are you getting those kind of calls?
Way down. Like, since the shelter came in, it's down. However, we have seen a bit of an uptick now because it's cold. So right now, behind the lorry door is a, a prime spot. They're setting up there. I think, um, we got three calls over the weekend, but prior to that, we weren't really getting any. But now you have people trying to stay warm, trying to build a little camp over the weekend to stay warm before they get kicked out. And then they huddle in the doorways and smoke drugs and they call us. And usually we just clear. usually we just clear everybody out. They usually pre-cooper, they will leave. But let's say someone was smoking drugs, didn't leave, they probably lead to an arrest under certain circumstances. But again, it's still challenging to do that. Because even though there is direction that we can arrest and charge, that is not the preferred method. They want us to try to deal with it other ways. And if that's the absolute only thing we can do, then that's fine. Yeah. So they put a high on us on us before we send forward because a charge, because we'll put together a case, send forward a charge and they won't approve it because we haven't followed, you know, a basic compassionate step. So it's, it's challenging.
No, thank you. Appreciate that. Any other questions for the council? Yes.
Mike, I know this isn't an in-camera meeting, but is there anything in our community that you're concerned with that we should be aware of? Is anything being recorded here?
And that's, and that's a collapse. I can give you a couple, I can give you at least one thing that's very interesting, but I can't talk further.
I understand that you're limited, it's what you can say too.
It's, it's one particular person. So there's always one or two people who I would consider now a dangerous offender. So we do pursue people who are inherently dangerous people. You get the dangerous offender designation and then that going forward, anytime you're dealt with, with the criminal system, they're treated very differently. And it can be, you can impose harsher sentences and more monitoring. So we do have a concern about something like that right now, but we're working on the case. We're hopefully to be successful. But yeah, so I think for the most part, we're okay. Actually, we had one of our most prolific people who caused a lot of violence incidents pass away. And I won't mention the name, but that was fairly significant for our community. That person was in court for a body defense. And it may change like the nature of things for a while. In the sense, there'll be less violence in the air caused by that person. So so a couple of things. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Wilson.
Thank you through the chair. You touched on the two point five grams. Are we moving back on that though? Is we see?
Yes, but we haven't got an official.
So it's not, it's in the works.
Things go very slowly. I think that's, they're going to, they've indicated that this isn't working, they're going to go back. However, I still think there's going to be some caveats to that. You know, what I think is best to have a designated place for it versus everywhere and then you know, we can, then that way we can deal with the criminal aspect of it rather than just people using it.
But for right now, we're still under that decriminalization. Okay. Thanks, Mike.
Okay.
Counselor Benson. Thank you through the chair. You've dealt with like a number of years now with like little resources. What are you most looking forward to this year with the full complement?
Feeling like I take a day off. Me and my actual purple splinter talked about that, how, oh man, we're going to take time off every month because we don't need to be there covering shifts. Yeah. And then like I am hoping that we get our staff sergeant position back and our crime reduction positions up and working because it does make a big difference. Like we do, when we have two administrative NCOs in the office every week, we have to deal with bail hearings, we have body warm cameras coming, which are going to consume a lot of time. It's nice to have those extra people helping with the workload because then you can plan more things. And I think like what I've noticed, if someone's running investigations that may have been lagging, now we're putting energy into and sometimes with policing too, down the road, you can do undercar operations for drugs, buying drugs. You can do projects like, you know, going after certain people or we used to when we had crime reduction, I mean, like they would just pursue people on warrants. We have no, a two-page warrant list. Most of these people I think are gone out of the area, but you can give those lists to our crime reduction unit and they just follow up on it. Even if these people are in different jurisdictions, we just go pursue it if we're caught. So I do look forward to that. It's kind of like, that's the fun part of police work is the proactive stuff. We feel like you're accomplishing something at the end of the day versus just keeping up with the calls coming in.
Yeah. That's great. Thank you, Mike. If there's no other questions, thank you so much for being here and thanks for everything you do for our community. We really appreciate the work that you do out there.
Thank you very much.
Okay, well, under number six is staff reports and we had two monthly reports and the recommendation is council consider and resolve to receive the information. Counselor Wilson and Counselor Butler. Thank you.
Just a point of order, we all need a mover on best recommendation.
On, oh, on the staff report? Just a mover? Yeah. Is that why I just have an amber?
Yes, that would be it.
Okay, so it was Counselor Wilson. May I just follow up with a question on the bylaw enforcement report? Is that going to be, are we going to have year-to-dates added on for business licenses coming this New Year?
That was the information that was given to me when the report was submitted, that the new form of report was starting in January, part one twenty five.
Thank you so much.
I looked it up though, if you wanted. What is it? Counselor Benson?
Thank you through the chair. In twenty twenty three, the new application year-to-date was forty five versus sorry, let me open this one. And new licenses year-to-date was forty three. So both up.
Thank you. Okay, any, I see anyone for a question period?
Do you need to call a question?
Oh, okay.
Mr. Recieve.
Is there a motion to recieve the report? Thank you, Counselor Wilson. Do I need a second?
No.
Okay, thanks.
It's just all.
Okay, thank you for your help with that. Okay, on to item number seven. Oh, sorry, all those in favor. All those opposed. That was cutting it, honestly. Thank you. Okay, question period. I see no one here for questions.
No one on one.
Okay, thank you. Next item is number eight, a resolution to rise from the committee of the hall. Counselor Wilson, is there a second? Counselor Hanson, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. And on to item number nine is a resolution to exclude public, recess the public meeting until six P M and immediately convene into closed session. The resolution is that pursuant to section ninety of the community charter, the public be excluded from this portion of the meeting as a subject matter being considered relates to the following. The community charter, section ninety one C, labor relations and community charter, section ninety one K, negotiations relating relating to the provisions of municipal service. And further, that the public portion of the meeting be recessed until six o'clock P M and further, that council immediately resolve into a closed portion of the meeting.
I will do that.
Counselor Benson is moves it and Counselor Wilson is second. All those in favor? That was Carrie. Thank you.